Hey, I'd like to call to order the East Chicago Council regular meeting for Wednesday, May 24th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Roll call please.
Second District Copsman Lenny Francis.
Present.
Third District Copsman Ferrin Hill.
Here.
Fourth District Copswoman Stacy Winfield.
Present.
Fifth District Councilman Robert Garcia.
Present.
Sixth District Copswoman Gilda Oring.
Present.
Councilwoman at large Deborah Bolano.
Here.
Councilman at large Dwayne Grant. Councilman at large Kenneth Monroe. Council President Monica Gonzalez.
Here. Please note that Councilman Rasper did call and advise he was not to be able to make the statement. And minutes of the council meetings.
We have minutes for regular meeting, how? Read 22 of 23, also 4, 26 of 23. So move now to the second.
Motion made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Hill. Any questions? Roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Communication from the mayor?
I have none.
Communication from the president.
Council payable warrants, 051123CC, 051723CC, and 052423CC. Hold on for a second.
Hey. Motion made by Councilman Francis, seconded by Councilman Hill. Any questions? Roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia. Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Pay reward by weekly, 051223. The move.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Hill, seconded by Councilman. Thanks. Roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Are there any committee reports? Are there any board reports? Orders is on first reading.
Orders, first reading, ordinance 23-0013, sponsored by Councilman Ferrin Hill. An ordinance amending section 71.140 of the East Chicago Municipal Code, placing stop signs on various street corners at intersections by east on 149.
So move on first and second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Horace, seconded by Councilman Hill. Are there any questions?
Yeah. The reason I spoke to you today is because when I was canvassing during the campaign, a lot of my new residents and my old residents had problems with the law too, but they're zooming down at the beginning of 149. And there almost been a couple of accidents there. So I told them I was trying my best and asked you all to come to stop this and put it up. It was a safety issue. I will appreciate you all if you all can help me out with this. Thank you.
Councilor next to you, Mr. Jackson. How do you know that last two by the way were guys?
Yeah.
I think you want to think about also two minutes to speak. He's in the sign there, he knows.
Well, I had a bunch of people applaud, uh, eastern, using the way. Okay. Thank you. Sounds good.
Any other questions? Hey, we're here at first and second reading. Roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yeah.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion is under the rule, man, present.
Second.
Hey, motion to the standard, the rules, my board is 230013. Motion made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Hill. Any questions? Roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion made by Councilman Garcia to hear, ordinance 230013 on third and final reading, seconded by Councilman Hill. No questions? Then roll call please.
Francis.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Oring.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Think about how you could use both.
Next ordinance on first reading.
Ordinance 23-0014 sponsored by Mayor Anthony Pope. Additional appropriations ordinance for the Department of Parks and Recreation for splash pad construction. Move on first reading. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Garcia, seconded by Councilman Hill. Questions of Councilman Garcia? Good evening, council. Now give one second. Second, roll up this.
Evening. I'm here to talk about the two, well, cohorts. But the first two are for the splash pads, the ordinance 230014, as well as ordinance 230015. And the reason I am just pulling them together is because of the funding and where it's coming from. The first set of the funding money for 0014 would come from, if I'm not mistaken, what would come from the Riverboat and the other one would come from already allocated funds that we have in our park fund, our cash fund that we have. So that's why I'm talking about both of them. With that, I would like to start a presentation just of what it is to have, the reason we came up with splash pads. So overall, I think the, the main thing we're trying to do is come up with a solution to not having pools open. Back when I first came on as a park director in 2020, June, is when I was given the task of finding out splash pads versus pool. And we had to figure out what was going to be best for our community long term or how much money are we really going to get to, to the project long term. With that, we did some research and we came up with a couple of things. First, the concerns of reopening a pool. The second thing was what would be the solution? So again, we're here to have a conversation to see what we could do to make sure we have water activities for our residents of East Chicago. And then let's make some action plans. First and foremost, I wanted to let you guys know that the pools, both Washington and Kusco both opened in June 24th, 1999. Which means that was, I was 16 years old. Some of us have been here to see when inception of this actual started happening. But regardless, that puts us at about 24 years where these pools have been. Now, when you do your research, you'll see that something that is a concrete shell, the lifespan between 20, 25 years. I can't tell you if all the maintenance was done previously. I can't tell you even the two years before. I can't say that because I was not here. But what I do know is that they treat it as much as possible. I also know that when it came to that span of the three years, I would have multiple times where I have the company who actually established up, come in and check on how many was going to be needed. You'll see in a previous, a next slide, how everything is actually corroded. Now, we see the visual on the top, the surface. We don't see what's on the inside. When I was talking to the spirit company, they tell us that the sandbags are on the inside of these big old filtration systems that were used back in the day. That all is probably corroded. We don't know how much is actually left in those pipes. We don't know if they broke because of the fact that the water has to come through the pipes in order to go to the pool. We don't know the unknown. So with that being said, I just wanted to just let you know about the lifespan of the pools. Another big issue that not just us, but the surrounding city, actually, I gotta do turn on the TV and y'all all know that life guarding is a big issue and how much we pay them. The city of Chicago, at one point last year, just, you probably want to just go on those, the TV now, they're paying not only $25 per hour, but they're also paying $600 per retention. So I went back and I've seen how many, about how many people you actually would need to, how should I say, man the pools effectively and safely. Because while we understand that CDC states that having pools and that recreation is good for the community, we're in a community that one does not know how to swim as often. So we need to make sure we have the safety of it. So effectively, within 15 and 20 people is what could run, right? With that being said, I can't even get 22 people hiring the parks and recreation partners to open up the small centers. And I go on interviews literally every week. So that's another issue that we're having. On top of how much are we really going to pay? How much can we pay? Will people want to come? And I have to work with Chicagoland area because they're the job, the skip away. I have to work with Michigan City. Michigan City is $25 an hour. So we're on this city and we're all pulling for the same people. So that's all the issues that we're having with lifeguards. So as you can see, just to let you know, this is one of the actual filtration systems. All this here is the corrosion of the actual filtration system. Down here, you'll see some of the rust with, the sand actually was kind of spewing out here. These are also, when I talked to the spirit company, the company came in. So again, I think the council asked me the last time I came up, was get an assessment. So I've had two assessments, one in 2019. There was, well, there was one done in 2019, one is done in 2020, and then recently, about a month and a half ago, we did it again and they showed me, they explained to me what's happening with this system. Most importantly, these are obsolete. So the pools that we have, they wouldn't even run off of this. They'd run something smaller, a little smaller. For them to actually filter out the pool with the chemicals. So a couple of things that are concerned. One, all repair maintenance that is going to happen. We do not know what's under it. I can't tell you. The spirit company cannot tell them. They can just say, hey, it's possible, you know, what happened? The other thing is the chemical expenses. Annual living pay for chemical expenses. We had chemicals there. And unfortunately, they are, we can't use any of them. They expired. We even thought, oh, they were just schools, but they were retired. So we couldn't even get them from the school. So we'd have to start anew. The other thing is, the chemicals are an issue. So when you're in a pool, that water sits, that water sits on your body. So all that chlorine, as well as the acid are all sitting on your body. And we made sure, I made sure to do that research to see how it affects the skin. With that, the heating expense is also an issue. And the annual maintenance. So because we want to do this, right? We obviously want to vibrate, tie in annual maintenance on this. Previously, they go to annual maintenance. So now we'll just end up getting some type of annual maintenance moving forward. Every new project that we've had, we try to make sure to put that in this cost effective long term. So the other thing that we have is the low number of patrons. So, and I don't know if it's because they ended up charging for pools at one point in time, but we did have roughly 400 people who ended up actually getting a card to go to the pool. So let's say 200 on each side. And it's about 2,000, right? So they were saying, we did the research, eight to 10 year olds are the ones who actually use the pools the most. So the other thing was, is that with those 400, did they all go on the same day? Were the pools open every day? No. We had plenty of times, I'm sure, where someone falls off and it's been open because he had had certain amount of lifeguard care per, per square area. Um, the other thing that's important to note is that the pools that we have are not ADA compliant. So the only people that can go are those who are like us, are able to have two legs to actually go into the pools. We do not have any compliance for them. We would have to build that. I would assume that we would want to build that if we had to. Having, another concern is the drowning. Again, my concern for the drowning is that do we have enough people? Will we have enough people who can offer? I can't tell you that, especially because I cannot compete with the surrounding areas. And the final thing is, I know you've seen all of the wonderful new things that are going on in Hammond, in Maryville, YXCA, White. They're brand new indoor pool. We cannot compete. The pools that we have that we're building, we're solely for kids to go. You can't dive in them. They're, they're only up to, I want to say, it's not 13 feet or more. So this is just a place where people can just kind of wait, not so Olympic style. This is not where we're operating by any means. With that, these are some of the headlines of the area. It says, more than half of the city's summer lifeguard jobs are still vacant in the Chicago Park District. Lifeguard shortage has parks, pools worried about the next year. Chicago offers 600 retention bonus for lifeguards, 500 referrals. Not enough staff to operate deep river ice skating rink this winter. Lifeguard recruitment going well for the summer. So they're giving people that we need. Another thing is, you know, of course, you gotta do the research, right? The only pools in this area in northwest Indiana are Hobarts and Munster. You might be able to go a little further south and they have them. I doubt it. The new areas such as Charroville, Dyers, Valpo, when they're building, they're not building pools. They're building splash pads. You could go next door and talk to our neighbors. He'll tell you, the mayor McDermott, he said, we're losing our shirt with the pools being open every year. And quite frankly, we're working a lot of time. So these are some of the areas our neighboring sister, I guess, cities, Val Beresal is a splash pad there. Hammond, this is the new splash pad they have there. Crown Point, you can see somewhere at night, the light. So we come to some of the pros of a splash pad. My first item that we have on here is splash pads, also known as interactive fountain, spray pads, spray parks, wet decks, are aquatic venues that spray or jet water on users. Splash pads are usually designed so that the standing water does not collect. And the water play area to reduce the risk of drowning. And that's from the CDC. Accessibility for all ages. So you could be an adult, you could be a child, you could be a tween or teen. It's going to be ADA compliant because I can roll my wheelchair on if I would like. So that's all things that we're touching on. It's possible that the long term, I understand the numbers now does not look nice. I get that. Something new, everything that you have new does not look nice. But long term, cost effectiveness is what's important. You don't have to hire the lifeguards. We don't have to spend all the money on chemicals. We don't have to do all the extra that we need to for a pool. The upkeep and maintenance is different. Right now, we have to have public works take classes in order to make sure that they know how to mix chemicals correctly. I'll tell you, I know in the schools, we have one person who actually does the chemical work at the schools and one person only. And when they tried to fire him, you're bringing him right back because only one person else I do it. That's the same way it is in city. Only certain people know how to do it. If someone leaves, it's going to be hard to make sure they are compliant, make sure they do things correctly. If not, it can be poisonous. So again, just splash pad, what it does is fosters physical development, providing sensory stimulation through the tactile injections with water spray, streams and jets. Because of the water coming out, obviously, there's some type of form of, just playing with the splash pads, obviously, you make sure that it's compliant enough for you to be able to run. So you're getting physical activity, you're getting activity overall with them. And then the good thing is that it's low exposure to chemicals, so the chlorines. Because of the fact that you could do it either with one or two ways, where you can choose natural water that comes through, or two, you use a minimal hot chlorine in order for the water to filter through. And again, safety. We don't have to use the individuals as the lifeguards. We don't have to have the basket person there. And while those smaller people, you know, those, those smaller jobs are from the city, I'd rather find a way, let's hire them somewhere else within the city, give them a job off in some new somewhere else. Because I know that job, right? But we have to make sure that we keep our kids safe. We also have to make sure to give them something. And again, like I said, lifeguard are not needed. So again, you gotta do your research and we see this. We have Chesterton, they have one splash pad, no outdoor pool. Crown Point, two splash pads, no outdoor pool. Hammond, two splash pads, no outdoor pool. The Tomship, Wicker Park, they have one splash pad, no outdoor pool. Michigan City, one splash pad, outdoor pool. Portage, one splash pad, no outdoor pool. St. John, Dyers, two splash pads, no outdoor pool. Val Beresal, one splash pad, splash pad, no outdoor pool. And just to mention, Hammond, where there's splash pads at, one of them, there was a pool there. They built over that. Same thing with Wicker Park. They had a pool there. They also ended up going to a splash pad. So this year, and I want to practice, this is not the exact design I'm going with. You know, I don't have them funded yet. So what the council did ask me to do was go figure out how much about it would actually cost. So I did talk to the company. And I did ask them to give me pricing. So this is not the final because, you know, we want to try to repurpose those slides somehow, some way. Can we do something different? But what I did ask them was to kind of give me something, right? So this is what this splash pad would look like. And it is one of a kind. The merchant, the people who would be making this, they want to do this immediately because this right here, I told them I wanted something like Chicago where we're going to be more interactive. So I asked them to do something fun. So these items here are brand new, never been done. And you're able to use your phone to write a message in these splash, the waterfall. So you can't see it as good here, but. Then what it is for the splash pad, how we're going to do this is because we know we want to attract different age groups, these waters projectiles that we have, some of them are going to be like a minor for the younger kid. Some of them will spew out a little bit stronger and more, and others will kind of be just in the middle because you know we want to attract a couple of different age groups, right? But the idea also just came, we have these water slides. Can we use them? So we will definitely be asking, why should that, asking to see if we can make use of that. But if you saw right here where this guy's at, those right there are just like the new technology for a splash pad. So we don't have to do like, as they brought, where I have to make sure someone's there in order to use it. There might be clothes, it might not be working. What we're going to do is we're going to use our phone and we're going to have a code and we're going to put our, put it on, turn it on that way. And if I paid for Parks and Recreation to go down the fountain, then my code is going to give me that. Because we have to find a way to use them, like wherever you put it. So we'll do it that way. The other way that those splash pads are going to be used are by weight. So if, it's a certain amount of weight that goes on there is when we're going to be able to use it. If you don't have your phone for some reason, right? Because I don't want my phone to get wet. You understand? So I'll put my code, I'll put my phone there and then I'll go in there and it'll see the weight. So then I'll actually make the water go down. So that's how it looks in the day. And then of course, we wanted to have some night action also. So we'll have the features, we'll have water also with light in the evening time too. Again, we're able to control how this goes. Because for the community that's in that area, obviously, you don't want there to be late night hours, right? So we could control the time to go along and go off. So the parks open from dawn to dusk, will have open to a certain time. And it'll only work during that certain time and that's it. They bring their stuff, they bring the phone, the weight, but anytime after that, we would have to program this to actually go on. Let's see. So the actions, we need funding now. Why do I say that? Whether we get one now or whether we get two now, and I say that two because when you talk to the company, the company that I talked to, they said, you are behind the game. Right now, we can only promise you one splash pad for next year. So again, we're already behind. So we need some type of funding now. When I came two years ago, same thing. We need a funding in order to start the project. We don't have funding. We're not going to start funding next year at all. You know, when talking to the, to the mayor, I explained to him the situation and he said, well, regardless, the pools, we're not going to get out of it. This is a solution to try to get something done. This is a solution to try to get something done. So, um, and another thing I put on there is what we have indoor pools available. We have a enter vocal agreement with the school city of Chicago. In reality, all their facilities, their sports facilities, we are able to use as well as they're able to use our sports facilities. As long as they're compliant with the agreement, we should be able to go and use their pool. We can hire those basket attendants for the two days or three days or the month. That's where I learned to swim, because we were able to have family night. We could continue that, but it's indoors, it's safe, enclosed. So it'd be them having to help us, the city. So a way that works collaboratively. At the end of the day, I'm here to finally find a solution. If you would like to see anything else going with splash pads, please make sure to email me. We could try to find a way. Again, this is just, um, the first step of having a conversation just to get these numbers on here. Uh, more accurate numbers, the longer you wait, the more the money comes up, you can see that. Um, and like they say, the longer you wait, the further it gets pushed back. And I personally would not like another year of not having anything. Um, I'm sure everyone else feels the same. So, uh, I did give you guys a couple of, um, packets to, or if it worked, if you have any questions.
I have a couple of questions, okay? So I'm gonna answer, I'm about to say, some you may not be able to. But you could do a research and I'm just concerned, uh, with the pools. And I know it's been a lot of community, uh, has been talking about pools. And I know, uh, when you had the company come out to speak to you about the pools. Uh, suggesting that we could have someone, I know you may have to pay, they come out to give a quote. But so the council and the community can hear, is this pool fixable? Whether it's, uh, Washington or Ann Caskins, so so that the people can hear from the companies. And then also, what you may not know, which you might have researched before your time. Is, uh, I was just concerned on what kind of money was used for the pools, building the pools. So that's a question you could research. I didn't know if it was the federal funding or not, if it was, it could can you demolish it to put splash pad or is it a one for one? You know, if that's the way it was funded, I wasn't for sure, so that's why I had to second that. If this, and I was supposed to out, just by you, stay out there. And then if they're going to be able to use the schools, would that be block and central? Or just the ones, you want me to answer?
Yeah, okay. So again, we have access, we should have access to both block and central. Um, we have access to anything that has, that is a facility there. We just have to ask them, as they apply the right here, that's in a local group and state. So as long as they give us access, we can use whatever pool they would like. Um, with that, uh, the federal funding, so. And I'm gonna say, just from my knowledge of federal buildings, you're able to knock them down. You're able to move things around. Um, I think that's a simple, and I, you're right, I don't know, um, Mr. Elagretti asked me if, um, I knew. No one in the city really knows, they don't remember. But regardless, I do know that can we not that got it, the federal building paid for that money? That's, yes, you can. And I think you're turning into that.
Basically, if it's a one for one, you, you're switching from a pool to a splash pad.
So. You mean it's switching first?
Because if, if it's federal funded, right, you could do a trade off. So if you're gonna say, we're gonna close the pool.
Yeah.
To do a splash pad, then you could do that versus you just closing it and it just be brown.
Right, uh, not that, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't check for that. But I do know that when it comes to the federal funded project or federal building, forever, that was something built in federal fund, you could tear it out. I do know that. Um, and I wanna say that we actually don't have to do that, cause if I think about the school when Lincoln was tore down, he didn't put another capacity. So I'm pretty sure that we don't have to do that. I'll research that.
Asking that question, exactly. And then if they, it's going out to suggestions, because if they were to be able to use the schools. Once everyone here, whether the pools cannot be repaired or it can, then use the schools. Just an idea, since block can be the younger and the central will be to teenagers. Because you have teens that we got splash pads.
And again, to your question about is it fixable? I mean, it's fixable, right? And like I said in the beginning, uh, I'm sure you could fix it. You'll have to put some money in, so I'm sure it'll be fixed. Uh, but the lifespan between twenty five and thirty years.
That's why I'm asking.
Do we really wanna fix something like that?
And that profession, that, that company would be able to.
Yeah.
And that's why I was asking, give a company, like everyone can hear it.
Right.
Okay, well, they're professionals, they can tell us. And then it's still be, cause you could have a splash pad and a pool, not in the same area.
No, no, I agree, I mean, you might be, but I don't know, someone, they might change it up, I don't know. But regardless, I know what's happening from my boss's standpoint. And those pools will not be there. So I'm here just to let you know kind of what the outcome. Um, the pool, again, it could be fixable, but why would you wanna fix something at twenty five to thirty years and then have to do? But I do know that he stated to me that that will be gone, and he made sure that I let you guys know that the pools will not be there.
I just wanna clarify, what she's saying right now is there's gonna be no pools, period. That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, I am saying that there's gonna be.
So just want everybody to understand that that's the position of the mayor, right?
Correct.
No pools, so this is what's before you.
Um, can you please, uh, recognize the person who was speaking?
How much did we pay our life guard?
Um, I'm gonna say what you paid them was a minimum wage back then, so, uh, the last time. I know now we would pay them minimum wage, not fifteen thousand an hour, sixteen thousand an hour.
And Michigan City is twenty five.
Correct.
Correct. And we couldn't reach that?
Um, you know, uh.
We've been talking for lifeguards, it's all, it's all a bidding award anyway.
No, I agree, but can I in my budget? As long as I don't have all the staff, I'm sure I can. But again, I go back to the point of, we can't even get the staff to happen. So, soon we could.
Okay, good answer. Question, next question. Uh, lifeguards in the school system, who could pay?
If it's a project that we would do, we would definitely be the ones to pay them. So we would give them, just like they used to when you were there, you would actually, uh, train a lifeguard and do all that stuff for the schools. If, while they have their own, maybe we would pay them to stay for our programs, just like we do for our programs now.
So would the price still be?
This, come on and roll, put your microphone.
Price still be on the way?
What, under wage?
Under tw- under twenty five.
Um, that's something that we would have to work out if someone gets to that point.
And there's no supervision in the, the sprinkling system?
We would not need supervision on.
Thank you for that presentation. Um, I know you were there with the pool and the maintenance should not be a part. And it's just the past people that the mayor had in there that didn't maintain those pools. And pools shouldn't be maintained. Um, I ain't got no problem against, uh, splash pads, but I'm against closing down pools. Um, and the thing we said, we asked from the past was, what was wrong with them? How much to, to, they didn't fix, we never got that. Um, one thing we did say that filtration system they have is huge. Uh, and you wanna be smart, so that, that means maybe more, uh, makes sense, should be easier instead of it is the smart. Um, and also, um, township pool, that was so old, I used to swing back then when I was a kid. Those old traditional pools, everybody got away from it. And that's why Hammond and all the other communities, they were down, because it was the old traditional, you know, with the diet board, nobody does that. Um, so, and, and you mentioned one thing that our, our pool does not ADA compliant, but our pool we do need it. Now, I think our pool is like one of the, one of the kinds in the heritage where if there's a walk-in pool. Somebody could have a future, somebody in, so why is not that ADA compliant?
Cause it don't stop.
There's no stop.
Mm-hmm, so yeah, you're right, I can get rolled in. That's the goal, so there's no stop. So a lot of the, you wanna make sure it's a level area, so be able to use that report.
Um, and to me still, when you have splash pad, you need somebody to watch.
And I mean, that's a concern that you bring that to our, that, that's your concern that you can bring to us and we got a discussion about that. Again, the reason why we didn't want, we don't need it, you don't. Um, but if that's a concern that you guys have, then then maybe that's something that we bring to the mayor and say, hey, can we have someone there? To watch over, cause we understand it's gonna be vandalism, we understand it's gonna be playing, force playing, it might be a bit too much. But that's just the conversation. Again, I'm here to find solutions. So we can have something done, rather than just be totally against not having anything, so.
Also, um, you mentioned, um, they may be able to log in with it, so people still got to pay to use the splash pad.
No, you don't have to. What I'm saying about using your phones is, if you want to have that, I love my city or, um, Councilor Robert Garcia, then you have to pay for something like that. But you don't have to pay to go on to use them, no.
When can we be able to get those numbers on a repair of that?
So I did have numbers for repairs, um, but again, with those numbers, it stated that it's only what's on the surface. That's the only reason I didn't give them to you, because of the fact that it's not accurate. So if I had accurate numbers, I'd be able to give to you. All these numbers I've given you are accurate numbers, uh, from demo to, um, how much it costs to put something brand new.
Thanks, I see the demo, it, it, it doesn't cost half a million dollars to demo this pool, but that's a lot of money. You know, it takes a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand to fix the pool. I think it's, it's.
Oh, no, it's waiting on that, that's, that's not even starting, you won't even.
For the filtration?
You won't even, you won't even touch it.
What's costing?
What's costing, um, so you have not only the filtration system, but you have cracks in your actual pool. The line on top of the, uh, actual pool surface, those are all cracks on through there. Um, also, some of the piping inside the, uh, actual building, there's cracks in there. I have, um, water that leaks in, cannot go out, so most of them are all rusted. So that's just from the building, I don't know the, um, how it was constructed or whatever, it's just seeping. So, um, a hundred thousand wouldn't even touch, scratch the surface of it.
Yeah, I just, I'm just trying to wrap my head on it, because I didn't see much.
And that's just for one, that you said, two hundred thousand for one.
Two fifty three.
Yeah, oh no, uh, I mean, that's.
To, to, to the modesty, you said.
Right, but I can't even get two fifty to fix one from what's on the surface.
But again, can you email all of us what's the issue with those pools?
Yeah, uh, well, I can send you what I do know, or what the sphere company actually stated that is actually happening. Um, but there's, I'm sure, double warrant.
Councilman Henry.
Yes, and you demolish these pools, what about the V A P pathway, you're changing them in the classroom, what do you notice?
That's it, yeah, that's it, so we're just gonna change it up, um. There's a concession stand, that area that's there, we're gonna still use the concession stand that's there. So I guess you'd say someone will be watching that area, that's, so they'll still be open, right? Um, also, there, if people wanna change, you'll be allowed to go and change. Um, so those remain there. And the reason they remain there too is because of that filtration system happens to remain inside of there.
Councilman, Councilman Linus. Um, what you're saying, the spirit group, so that's the only?
Nope, I've contacted many other in Indiana. So when I went down to a conference in Indianapolis, um, I wanted to see if there was any other companies or any other cities that use different. Um, so the spirit group is the main group that kinda goes with, um, this Northwest Indiana area, that's what most people go with. Uh, but then the people actually do the, so this, the spirit group uses vortex to actually do it. Um, I went to a company in Illinois also to ask them to, you know, see what they can give me. So there's different companies, uh, but the reason why we went through sphere to just, like, just to ask them, they're actually the ones who get the pools. So the, the thought.
Nineteen ninety nine?
Correct, so the thought was, if you have, can we do some of the stuff that's already there to actually do the splash pad? Um, and they said, there's absolutely no way, like, we have to get rid of all this because of how old it is. So that was the reason why I wanted to go, so I'm trying to find costing and basing it.
And what is the surface when they walk on it, what, what is that?
This right here?
Yeah.
So the one that we're gonna use is something like this, the reason why is because, um, in, let me show you on here, it should be in your packet, exactly the name of it, I can't tell you all, can't. But we wanted to do something where you're able to do colors. So, but that right there, you could use somewhat of a concrete, just has more of a cushion. Not slip, not where you're able to slip, it's in your packet.
Somewhere.
That I gave you, or the type of surface that's actually gonna be used.
So it's not slippery?
Correct.
That's my point.
Oh, yeah.
Cause we have so many young kids using it and they're running around. That's what I wanted to know, I mean, your packet is, uh, thick. They're gonna be able to go through everything, but I mean, looking at the picture here, that's why I'm asking. And then the other is, um, I know somebody else already said it, but I really truly believe that if you're gonna have a splash pad, you do have to have people supervising, because nowadays, and you know how kids are. I mean, and what are the ages they're allowed to enter by themselves or they have to have it?
Well, I would say you have an age, like I said, there's gonna be three areas. So you have one for the little kids, you have one for like a median age group and then the older ones. So it's up to the parent, I'm assuming that a parent would go with their child in there, I would, you know.
Not all the time.
But you're actually able to do a brand age group, I mean.
So like I said, my concern too is, is this, not only the safety, but to have someone there, right? From, uh, workers that know what they're doing and, and to keep order. Because if we don't have order, then you will have, uh, you will have problems. The problems that you had there that you said that, that we won't have, yes, you will. If we don't have people there working that are qualified, right?
And I'll make sure to take that back, again, I'm here, if this is something that by making sure we have this funding, this is something that we wanna make sure we have, then we'll make sure to have this in our budget.
And the other thing is, is that I like the idea of a splash pad, but I don't think too. And that's my opinion, and if they're gonna close the other pool, then use it for skating pad, uh, is that skateboard?
Skating rink.
Skating rink or something like that. I mean, we're gonna close it and put grass and then what, sort of what happens in the, in the winter time? I know you've had a skating, you have one here, but it, to me, it seems like it's too, too small or.
Well, that's odd.
Either one, I don't know which one.
I know we're talking about splash pads, but.
No, I know, but I'm talking about when you close the other one.
Right.
As the mayor's saying, he wants to close it. So what are we gonna do in its place, just grass?
So I just want you to know, or I have done my due diligence, cause I've heard about the, um, skating, the park, the park skate parks. And I've talked to Spohn Ranch, who's done, um, Hammond's as well as Valpo. So we're in collaboration, I, he, I, the guy who's in charge actually told me he'll help me, uh, put together a proposal to possibly get a grant, so. It's, it works, I just don't know, I'm, I'm kinda get it done quickly.
Right, okay.
Quick, yeah, six months.
Yeah, I see the total here that you got for billables, it's sixteen, three hundred eighty nine thousand.
Correct.
Your action.
Correct.
So where is the rest from?
So, um, the reason why I have four million is because I have to start somewhere. And, um, you can see how much it will cost me to have to. Um, and you see how much it is for the demo. And I, like I stated in the beginning of my presentation, the companies are telling me I'm already deep popping. So the goal is to make sure I have one in next year as soon as possible. Um, the other one would, you know, would have to wait. But we need to at least get the funding to have one, and this is the reason why it's four million. Um, to at least do some of the projects, so we can have it done.
Any other, other questions? Uh, Councilman, this is.
It's impossible though, you can have spirit go to each pool and see which one's the worst out of the two. And then we could, you know, it'd be nice to have a pool on one.
And a pool on the other.
Yeah.
Kind of get one of, you know, so the, it's getting split, you know, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something possibly we can do off that thing. The mayor's not for the pool, but you know.
So I, in the paper, or you don't have this work, but yes, they did tell me which one worse compared to the other one. Um, that one was Washington.
It'd be great to have both, you know.
So I think he included pictures. So I can send that over if it's not a problem, but again, I. So, so she left it there. And I told him, I said, hey, boss, I'm gonna tell him. He said, no.
That's, I'm trying to kind of figure where, if you would have the splash pad in Washington, because you still, so I know it's this one area, that's where the zoo is. I'm assuming if, if it's there, is that the area? And that Debbie said about the Councilwoman Valance said about the safety. Yes, we need someone working because accidents. Bustings, anything, because I'm looking at children, planning what happens if something happens. Have, uh, the authorities trained to first aid. So that's a concern. I've never seen, uh, splash pads spent stand, but you don't want people to. Damage it, vandalize it, and we have a lot of that.
Yeah.
So that's a concern.
Well, that's true. When the competition first started was just solely that. Wide, wide open. Uh, we could put, uh, gate. We can, that's again, a conversation that we could go into, um, where you're right, the zooms there. Um, so those, uh, statues have to be moved throughout the parks. Um, there, because that's, that's where the zoo was. Um, so that, that'll be moved, but everything will be, um, like you said, demolished to, to complete. And then build it whatever needed and then they'll start from there.
And I know you're talking about the pools, but I'm with Councilwoman Valance about the skate park. You know, we have a. I have friends that have children that go to Hammond, and then we Chicago, we skateboarding. So the skate park, that's not what we're talking about.
No, I hear you. I hear you. You know, we're on schoolwork together, where they used to break those door a lot of times. So I understand that there are a lot of people in Chicago who do like that. And that has been one of the things that we have been trying to look into to make sure it happens. Take time. Try and get that fixed, folks.
Six months. Anybody else have any questions?
I, I do have some comments. Um. When I received this packet, I was, uh, upset because this packet was just given to us without any. Um, input from the council or the communities. And one of the things that I think that most of us, when we were knocking door to door is one of the things that they asked of the councilmen. Especially the districts, is that we work together. And we come up with a plan and we work with the administration and they didn't see it. And this is a very good example on how we had no input. We weren't asked for any advice. There were no readings. Um, we were just given a plan and saying basically, we want two splash pads and we're demolishing the pool, so that's it. Um, I can remember when I was young and I was a lifeguard and there was Goodwin, there was Nunes, there was Todd, there was Washington, and there was Coste. And we all had pools and then it was too much, so then we went to two, one on each side. And that's where I learned to swim. I learned to swim outside, um, at Todd Pool. And it just is very disappointing that it's, the decision is made already. To do away with the pools without any input or, uh, without any questions asked of this council. I passed out, um, something to, what the councilman about a program that Gary just started. And it's for summer jobs for the youth and it's using their, a, their art money specifically to hire. Uh, fourteen to twenty-one year olds to work the summer programs. And that's when I started working when I was fifteen. When this mayor came and was elected, he did away with that. Because we didn't have the funding at the time. We have the funding now. And we could do something similar where it'd be easier to compete with other cities. Because at fifteen, you're looking for a job and you're looking for a job that you can walk to. So that would be perfect. And I do have copies of that, so if anybody, to be honest, want that later. The other thing I don't, I'm a little, um. I guess my question is, they're asking, there's two different ordinances that they're asking for money for the splash pads. And it was said. That only one can be built. So one should be passed if we choose and we wait on the other. It makes no sense to pass two. If one can only be built by next year. And then I think that's all. So, um, Attorney Jones, did you have, uh, comments?
No, I think. Did you have ordinance fourteen on the floor right now?
Fourteen.
Fourteen on the floor?
Fourteen is on the floor still. So if there isn't any questions, any more questions, I recall roll call. For that one splash pad on the, on the.
Francis, yes. Bill, yes. Winfield?
Yeah.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orin? Valanya?
No.
Monroe, no. Gonzalez?
Yes. Motion passes. Next ordinance is for ordinance two, three, zero, zero, one, five. And that is the second ordinance for each second splash pad. The additional appropriation, um, asking from Parks and Recs. Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Orange, seconded by Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hill. Um, Mr. Francis, Councilwoman Francis, did you have a question?
No, I'm just gonna make a comment. I'm just gonna. Play why I'm gonna vote no on this one. I think that we could, you know, one is good and I'm all for it. Uh, but at least we gotta give a chance to see if one of those pools can be fixed. You know, I mean, if we can get some numbers in from Spirit, I'm sure it's not. That hard for them to go in, in there and do a, a, a vote for that. But I'm gonna vote no on this one because I think that maybe you can come back with us and see. Maybe it is, you know, too much to, to fix it. But at least we need to know, the public needs to know, that, you know, at least you gave it a try to see if we can get one of these pools back. Well, that one, the vote no on was second.
Attorney Jones?
Does the mayor care if it can be fixed? I'm just saying, I don't want everyone to go do a bunch of work. And again, my statement was that they're gonna be. Right, so. I could, what, what I could do is go back and like.
Yeah, come to the mics and, and so that it could be heard.
So what I can do is I could go back and say what's happened here at the council meeting, explain to him what you guys would like to see. I could definitely go back to do that, but again, what was told to me as the Park Recreation Director, and he is my boss. Was this is what's gonna happen, so.
Sorry to interrupt the world, that's what the council.
Councilwoman, I said.
People gotta know too, that your brothers are being kind of same thoughts and he, he needs to have some meetings in community and also with his council.
That's right. Yeah, I have just a suggestion too. Maybe you could send me an email, someone to them, explain to the thought here.
Any more questions or comments? Well, I have a comment. I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Franciski. I would like to see something available for the new next year. And as we work towards, um, if the pool can't be. Fixed, we have a hundred and ten million dollars, so still a new one.
Yeah, yeah.
That is my thought and that's why, um. I am going to say no on that. Roll call please.
Franciski, no. Hill?
Stay.
Winfield?
No.
Garcia?
No.
Orin?
Yes.
Valanya?
No.
Monroe?
No.
Salad?
No.
No, ordinance pays?
Ordinance twenty-three dash zero four one six. Want to mayor Andrew Topley. Ordinance to permit the acceptance of the grant funding by the Chicago Department of Parks and Recreation.
Oh, so I'm gonna make sure to send you. Motion made by Councilwoman Garcia?
Sir.
Second, second by Councilman Hill. There any questions on the matter?
Councilwoman Garcia, I should meet.
I have another presentation for you. So, uh, this ordinance is to just accept basically the grant funding that, um, we received, well, it's the Indiana, Indiana Department of Health. Um, we ended up applying for the grants, um, about. A year ago, maybe, a couple months ago, oh yeah, about a year ago. And we finally received it. We finally now put in motion, um, we did lose our greenhouse manager. So now we figured out what we need to do to make sure to make this happen. And like you guys all stated, it's important to give, um. The students of the Chicago opportunity to make some type of funding. So we wanted to make sure for us. As the Parks and Recreation to be able to do that. So we ended up going a different route and we got some grant funds. Um, here's just kind of the background of what our greenhouse is, the organization is in entirety. Um, and the program, which we call Steel. Is going to be able to do a couple of things. First, we'll have four, four, four ports of students. Um, and we'll be giving them, um, five hundred dollars of a paid internship. With this, what they're gonna do is they're gonna practice, um. The regenerative agriculture to grow food for their community. Uh, what we are learning is that our community needs to learn how to grow their own food sustainably. So we ended up having this program to teach them, to teach our students how to do that. Uh, we will go, we're going to assist in coordinating and facilities of bi-monthly food distributions with the community members. So we do it now. At the Parks and Recreation Department where we end up giving our food through the greenhouse, our free foods. Um, but they're gonna now help. Uh, we also are gonna have, um, they're gonna complete Purdue's extension of team cuisine. So Purdue University. On Northwest, they're gonna come in and teach our students the, the stuff that they're growing, the foods that they're growing. They're gonna be able to learn how to. Actually cook them, um, for their, for their families. So that's that. And then we're gonna teach them how to research, plan, and implement nutritional education for the program in the community. Uh, there's been talks of. Wanting to make sure that we have berry tree, then, uh, in our gardens can we grow the cheetah plants? And we're gonna teach them how to do that, um. As well as we're gonna develop a proposal to maintain this, uh, grant so they can continue. So here are a couple of the cycles that we will have. Um, we wanted to start off in June to August with ten student interns. Currently, we have seven. That are interested in coming. Um, the high school has a greenhouse or a green thumb root now. So they've been kind of coming. We've had a couple of field trips with them. So then that's actually where the idea of, uh. Applying for this grant came from, because there's children who are interested in learning how to actually plant their own food. So this is why we wanted to make sure to give them that. As well as we're giving them some sort of stipend. Um. So with that, it, this is a discussion of, this was, this was used to give to the state department. So. Uh, gives us information about the residents and who we are or wrong. And it talks about just the equity and the access for our community. Um, again, we're gonna expand to and the knowledge of whole healthy foods. Provide infrastructure for incentives for young people to work on the land, develop programming that informs and engages residents for a healthier lifestyle. And serve, uh, the broadest wealth of the community possible for a more efficient manner. Um. With this, not only would they be working at our greenhouse, but they're also gonna be taking it to the schools. And will end up doing plant boxes so that in turn they can take from the plant boxes to get to the students there or to the surrounding community. Uh, again, these are just the phases, uh, of volunteering the greenhouse first, just so we can make sure that they're committed. And then we'll be taking field trips, um, to make junior farmers and certification courses. Then we'll be serving interns at the greenhouse as well as, um, the school farm, which I said, the plant boxes. And, um, come eligible for employment. So the goal eventually is to secure seventy thousand dollars in grant funds if this continues, um, in the Parks and Recreation Department. So it says, excuse me, um, the summer cycle is broken down and I could send this to you guys. I just got done with it literally, um. A while ago, just to make sure I got it for you guys. Um, and I think what's most important is just to show you our budget of what we have. Um, the intern stipends, uh, we have the teacher stipends for those who are coming from Purdue Northwest. And we have the food and accessibility nutrition. And again, the teacher stipends from Purdue Northwest are the ones who are actually teaching our students. How to use the boots. Um, they have the lumber and the other products for the gardens. As well as soil compost, um, and then the distribution. So all this stuff is just supplies. In total, twenty-five thousand dollars of free grant money that's gonna be given to us so we can give to our community. So.
Attorney Jones, um, just real quick. This, and it's a space in the council, this is grant money, this is just a housekeeping issue where we just kind of improve it and work with. Who, who accounts, does not come to the city.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, yeah, twenty interns in?
Oh, yes.
Is that gonna be different for each session, for four sessions or it'll be the same?
No, it is. So the, what, how we explain it is that we want for like, we'll start off with seniors and juniors this year. Some seniors and juniors, and then as they grow, as they go and graduate, and we're gonna keep on bringing on. So you see that at the end, the goal is to have seventy thousand dollars. In total, that's because we want several phases to continue this program of the schools.
So they're all that the program, and it says they'll pay them fifty-seven thousand.
Um, I think I just have to keep reifying, so it just depends. Um, but today, I, I have to be honest, the Department of Health is very excited to have this here in. Northwest Indiana, especially East Chicago, because we're considered a food desert.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Franciski?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Valanya?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orange? If you can, just say. Okay, motion? Motion with expanded rules to hear, uh, the motion on second and third reading. Is that quick, Councilwoman?
Yeah, motion.
It's a fifth. Oh, one to the ten rules. And seconded by Councilwoman Garcia. Any questions? Roll call please.
Franciski?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Orin?
Yeah.
Valanya?
Yes.
Monroe?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Orange?
Second, third.
Second, third. This was, it's our anniversary, also it's our birthday. The motion made by Councilwoman Orange to hear ordinance two, three, zero, zero, one, six, on second and third reading. Seconded by Councilwoman Garcia. Any questions? Roll call please.
First one taken, first and second.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Third and final, Franciski?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Winfield?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
The two houses. Hey, ordinance is on second reading.
We have none.
Ordinance is on third reading.
Ordinance 23 to 0012, sponsor Lenny Franciski. An ordinance, East Chicago Common Council, please, on Bering Avenue, Street Carroll, Shell Street. We move second.
Motion made by Councilman Hill. Seconded by Councilwoman Garcia, any questions on the matter?
Franciski.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yes.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Third and reading, any resolutions?
We have none.
Any old business? Any new business? Councilwoman Garcia.
Attorney Jones, can you send the, please, Chief, a letter? I had a group of residents that approached me after this weekend. They buy a UPTA, they're throwing shots. Making a shootout at a group of citizens that's very concerned in that area. I'd like to know how many service calls they had for the UPTA in the area.
Tony Combs, Anthony Combs is our representative.
In order to get his contact information, the residents like to know what they can do to try to combat all this plant, this happening, shooting that's happening in the neighborhood.
Councilwoman Orange.
All right, I'll probably even ask that because I would like to know what's going on. It was a tweet on Facebook, of course, you know, Facebook is the optimum news for this. But about an officer in somebody's house, I know Councilman Hill, he can't, he got the call about that. I want to know what happened with that situation. It was very bad on Facebook posts and what is being done about that.
Councilwoman Francis.
I know there's two.
Both of them, I want to know what happened to both of them. I'd like to know the officer's name and I don't want to say anything in case there's no association. But they didn't know what the situation was for, because like I said, I know Councilman Hill, because he stopped me and said, did you get a call? And I said, yeah, I did get a call.
Right.
And is there any other one? Yes, Councilman Hill.
Attorney Jones, also put in that letter that also wants to give the chief about all that shooting going on in 4900 block of Alexander. And I've been trying to reach you for the last three weeks, but yet I haven't gotten a response. But if you give it to them guys immediately, see what you're trying to do, this Shaw coming, this shooting around here. You got these cameras around here, but are they working?
They number one.
You know, but with shorthand, that's really, that's the pattern. But I want to see you work. They need another.
Okay, we're going to ask that you please recognize the person who is speaking on the floor. Councilman Hill.
I'm trying to say something to get something done. Okay, so please, when we get the chief to have a meeting with some of the council members, have a meeting with the chief. What we're going to try to do to combat someone.
Excuse, excuse me, sir, excuse me, Officer Och. If you can't be quiet, I'm going to ask him to read.
Oh, I was, he was supposed to hear a page.
Councilwoman Francis.
I would like to know about that neighborhood and your garden. It will be Saturday, June 17th, from eight to four. Please come out and report my name, get all your files and gifts.
I'm with you. Um, I said, Councilwoman Hill.
Okay, I'm piggybacking on the two announcements. I'm piggybacking about the shootings that's going on to the, that has hit the Prairie Park area also. And can you send the chief a note, a request of community meetings, one on both sides of town? Because we have requested that and that hasn't stemmed, I think it has stemmed, it has stopped a lot of the concerns if we have those community meetings. Because I have been asking for cameras in the Prairie Park area and the only way they told, said that we can get them is we have abundance of cars. And it was just shootings around the Prairie Park area by the hospital and that's a huge concern. I mean, the summertime is here, you might as well say it's here and it's getting hot. Also, the fourth district, first district and fifth district, we have their annual garage sale, community yard sales. Saturday, June 2nd, we invite other districts to join, June the 10th. We're asking other districts to join in with us.
Anybody else? Councilwoman Garcia.
Yeah, did everybody know Monday's a holiday, it's Memorial Day. Not part of American Legion, it's by the way. And we'll be at St. John, St. Joseph Cemetery, putting flag on veterans of the graves. The more the merrier, for coming out there and helping, we appreciate it. Just remember our veterans that.
There anybody else? Can you tell us how we're all? I'm sorry, we're still on old, actually, so, any?
I would just like to thank all the people that wrote a letter for my dad for the Indiana. He's on that flight now, he's in Washington DC and I appreciate the people that did write the letter. Especially Lincoln School, it was over above, even the kindergartens drew pictures and sent the best they could all the way up. And I appreciate Dr. Gonzalez, and just the students do that and all the people that did write that. I thank you very much.
Any comments?
Because I didn't get a chance to hear a lot of it, but that's a great achievement for Mr. Carpenter. And I'd like to ask if we can actually recognize him for the month of June and submitting a certificate for him for clerk's office. If we can just have a raise for Mr. Carpenter, if you can recognize him at our first meeting of June, June 7th.
As instructed.
Is anybody else, anywhere in the business? Okay, one, one thing for me, I would like to the clerk's office to write a letter to the mayor and let it be known that there are 14 residents here concerned about pools in Chicago. I will also submit an article the north, from the Times, stating how we can work with our youth and work on our money towards working with our youth. And let him know that there is much concern about closing both pools. I think a compromise is great where we have one splash pad, one pool. And we'd be willing to, you know, sit at the table and talk about it and maybe just send that letter, please. There's not any more, any more new business, we'll go to public expression. The first one is Natalie. You state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Natalie Juchich, 4009 Grand Boulevard, East Chicago, Indiana. Wanted that some of you share a concern. When we looked at that proposal, we saw $6,381,100 and then in very little type, there was a note that said that that did not include seating and that did not include your shading structures. That means it's much more than this cost that you got. And yet, none of us have been told, and I understand pools get old, your homes get old and you need the redone. But when my home got old, I repaired my windows, I didn't demolish my whole home, I got estimates and I fixed it. I think we can fix one pool, we have all grown up and we have all had a pool. We are cheating our children out of having a pool and having this as a type of activity in the summer. And it was interesting that your director mentioned the CDC, because that's where I am going to come in and speak on. There isn't, there is an issue with the splash pads. Right now, this is the flavor of the month and everybody's building them. You can't compare ourselves to surrounding communities. My friend lives in Munster. I would think that every kid on the block would be in her pool, but they're not, because there's three pools on one block. So every family has an in-ground pool. They don't care if the Munster has a beautiful pool, because everybody has their own. So if you go to any of these surrounding areas, these kids have their own pools. They're not dependent on the city providing this for them. CDC said something very interesting. Splash pads are made where you have those jet streams come up. Those jet streams act like a bidet. So if any of you here of European descent, if any of you have been to Europe, you know what I'm saying. Those kids sit on that splash pad and their rectal perineal area gets immediately cleaned and all this people matter goes down and then we recycle this. Since splash pads have gone up, the CDC has been monitoring this. They have children with listeria, goes back to the splash pads where they were at. You have kids that have had normal virus in the middle of the summer, which is unheard of, attached to these splash pads because you can't recirculate it. It's not like having a pool where you can put chlorine in. And I know my time is running out, but the most important thing is that a child died from splash pad. He had a type of meningitis that he got from bacteria in the water. The bacteria that eats your brain. So stop and think of where the city is going to be legally and which you, that all that passed a splash pad will be legally. Because if my child died from a brain eating disease, I bet you I would own this city. Thank you for your time and for listening.
And then to ordinance picks. Good evening, everyone. New ordinance picks by the phone world treat. Pretty much everything, the questions you all asked. Natalie, and I'm sure everyone else, you guys already answered the question, but the few things that I had been concerned about. I am an advocate for people with special needs. I graduated in 2000 and I am very familiar with the ADA. Those pools, those, you know, she's, our park superintendent or director spoke about how in a splash pad, the wheelchairs can stand still, wheelchairs have stoppers. So if they were to roll into the pools we have now, they could stop themselves. And even if they couldn't, anywhere on the splash pad, in those walking pools, there should be attended by their caretaker. So that, the fact that it's not ADA certified, that's not true. But I can ask a colleague and have them come and look at that pool, if need be. Okay, that's my big, everything else was pretty much attended to. The sad thing is, is that you guys sat here and asked all these questions and she gave a great presentation. But the bottom line is, her words that answered all your questions, the mayor said no. So no matter all the effort that we're all doing, he has his mindset on no. So I asked all you, where do we go from there? Because no is not an acceptable answer. Thank you, have a good one. Councilwoman Franklin.
I think that coffee out of the bowl of water, I gotta be real fast because I got a lot to say. During the election, I did not mention anything about the pool. I helped out one candidate that was here and I supported a lot of people and I love everyone that voted and ran for office. I respect everybody on this council, because everyone at the bottom of the end of the day cares about their issues and their grievances. Now, with saying that, I did not mention one time during the campaign about kids in this pool. Because there was one major issue I have with that, is we should never use our kid as a pawn in a chess game. And this is what happened. And now what's going on? I started a petition a week and a half ago. And I started not attacking everyone, because I'm always addressing everyone as my friend. Because I know we all work together on this, about opening the pools, what's wrong with pools? I've been communicating with a lot of people on the council, I've been communicating with my friend, that's on the, on the, on the, um, court director. And with saying that, we got over 230 people that signed my petition in less than seven days. Imagine if 230 people knew about what the mayor was going to do. That would be a big enough, and I respect anyone that was running for office, including him, and didn't want to mention that. And I'm trying to say right now is, I believe that we have two small splash pads. One right apart, I always hear our councilman Hill talking about how he wants new housing and housing, whatnot with, with his district. Imagine a small splash pad right there in your community for the young people here coming in. Imagine, there's one other place I want to talk about. My grandma grew up at James Hunterville, they have a park called Callahan. My good friend Gil does this. Imagine a small one right there for all that redevelopment, things going on with the new houses. And you can build those and you can still update at least one of the pools. And I beg you guys, I beg you guys to be humble enough to call the mayor personally, every one of you, it's out. Listen, we might disagree and agree on this, and agree and disagree on this, but we can work together to build at least one, to keep one open. There's funds, and guess what? You could hire a bunch of people that know how to write grants. That's, that's not hard to find. You could hire them to help rebuild these pools. There are different programs, 15, 11 years old to 15 years old to 17, do not play a splash pad like that. I'm sorry, I, when I was 16 years old, I wanted to go see the chief maybe build the pools. And I'm telling you right now, a lot of teams need to see that, a lot of girls want to go to pools. We have to figure something out for these youth, because you know what? Unlike Munster, everyone was talking about, that's beautiful that they got rid of it. But in that area is in the south and the east of our county, a lot of people have pools in that area. We don't have that luxury. I do make so many sense where they, please say crap out of that pool and we support you building that pool all the time. So I understand the importance of needing a pool for our district and for the whole city. So I'm begging you guys, please talk to the mayor. Send him an email and just break bread, break bread with him to tell him, this is what we all need. We need at least one of these people to say, okay, I beg of all of you, at least.
Thanks.
Short person here. Good evening, good evening, council. I'm going to show you that I have just completely crossed out everything that I wanted to address today because I think today I saw the first step and you all doing the right thing for the residents. So I'm not going to read what I wrote, instead I'm going to talk from my heart and I don't know if that's relevant. We all have concerns about the splash pads and we have concerns about the pools and the safety and the money. But after what I heard today about no is no, is my biggest concern today. I'm flabbergasted and appalled that we sit back and allow that in our city. I truly am. I texted one of my friends and I said, I'm ready to cry. And that is the reason people leave our city. We can combat crime, we can get together. But when you have a mayor that tells you no means no, our democracy is to crap, and pardon my language. Someone in the audience heckled and said, it's a dictatorship. Let's be very careful, please. Please be very careful with that. It's not a solution. Bringing that here is not a solution. It's not telling us, no is no is not the solution. It's a dictatorship, and please look up that word. And I just want to say thank you, and I forgot to tell you that my name is Nancy Barmatucha. And I don't know if you can tell from my voice shaking that I'm really emotional about this. I live at 507 Springs Street, East Chicago, Indiana. I keep saying I don't want to be up here, but somehow I find myself up here. I hadn't lived in East Chicago for over 15 years. I'm coming back and being here three years, I'm not going to leave. I'm not going to leave because I see the need for people to speak up and stop being intimidated and stop being afraid. And stop being told no, just because it's a tantrum. And I mean that with all due respect. But I think that today you all took the first step in really, really, really listening to our residents. And so I commend you and I thank you for that. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Christine Williams.
Good evening, council, my name is Christine Williams, 4119 First Street. I'm going to echo the sentiments of the speaker that just came up here. I came here with that data to support the need for a swimming pool, but after hearing what I heard today, that's nothing more. So what I want to do is thank the council for this idea of checks and balances, because that's important to maintain a democracy. And you all showed that and did that today, so I want to include that. But what I do want to talk about is the potential for what we can do for one of those pools. But what I do want to talk about is the potential for what we can do for one of those pools. I don't come to complain, but I come with solutions, and I think the person who could benefit from hearing it actually stepped out. But I'm willing to share this information, when you write the letter, let me know, I'll reach out to Parks Department, I have some solutions. But one of the things that's really important is, the American Red Cross have a plan that's going to double in size in two thousand, in two thousand and twenty-three. It's called the Aquatic Centennial Campaign. And here's what they're doing in communities with minorities, so that they can improve swimming. They offer swim lessons for, for children and adults. They develop lifeguards and instructors from the community. They have water safety education, CPR training for parents, and community-based outreach to the city to partner with them to get the word out. American Red Cross, which we need to reach out to, so we need solutions, we need to be able to have compromise. So I thank you, council, for being willing to do the check and balances, asking those tough questions, and I hope that the next time we're all in here, it's a collaborative effort. Thank you.
I have a motion for a motion. Motion made by Councilman Hill, segment by Council, uh, Franciski. Roll call please.
Franciski, yes. Hill.
Yes.
Winfield.
Yeah.
Garcia.
Yes.
Orange.
Yeah.
Bolano.
Yes.
Monroe.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Media turn.